All right, good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 16, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Cynthia, second. Scott, all in favor? All right, we're gonna jump out into executive session to discuss some personnel matters, and we'll be back at 7:30. This point now may be a little bit later than that, but we'll shoot for 7:30 for the regular meeting. Do I have a motion to enter executive session? Laura, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Okay, see you around 7:30. All right, good evening. Today's Tuesday, April 16, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. We actually already opened the meeting at 6:30, and then went into executive session, closed that out, and came back to here. So apologize for being a little behind tonight. I know we're running a little late. Sorry about that. So, meeting's already open. We can move on to our next agenda item, which is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, we'll get... Next up is some student representatives. I'll kick it over to Dr. Goodman for that.
First, we have some great students here tonight. It is my privilege to introduce Isabella Vivas. What was I saying? Vivas, a distinguished senior whose tenure embodies the epitome of academic excellence and exemplary leadership. Isabella's commitment to excellence, coupled with her dedication to both scholastic and extracurricular pursuits, renders her an inspiration to her peers and our educational community. In her time here, Isabella has assumed multifaceted roles, including co-president of Habitat for Humanity, treasurer of the Yearbook Club, and a member of our Investment Club. Her adept leadership, acumen, and dedication to philanthropic endeavors underscores her profound impact both within our school and throughout the broader community. Isabella's academic achievements are nothing short of remarkable. Her stellar performance within our honors program, coupled with her presidency of the Italian Honor Society and membership in the National Honor Society, are a testament to her intellectual acuity and commitment to scholarly pursuits. Moreover, her adept management of time is evidenced by her pivotal role as varsity girls soccer manager, and her two-year immersion in our theater program further attest to her dedication and resilience. Isabella's accolades resonate as a testament to her unparalleled character and resolve. I know Isabella well. We've had lots of conversations, and she is a very courageous and very bright young woman. Her acceptance into esteemed institutions such as Penn State University of Business, University of Buffalo School of Management, and University of Rhode Island College of Business serves as evidence of her academic proudest and boundless potential for future triumphs. It is with great pride, really, that I introduce Isabella tonight. She is an excellent student, and I'd like to tell everybody that she is going to Penn State, which is a great university, and we know that she's going to do great things. I can't wait to watch her trajectory. Your achievement, dedication, and passions are what our graduates of Tocco High School strive for and many achieve, and we anticipate all the successes that await you. And thank you so much for speaking here tonight.
Hi, good evening. I'll be starting with the academic update. On Saturday, April 13, our middle school debate team hosted an in-house tournament where our students tackled complex topics and showed off their debating skills. The tournament winners were Meredith Lowly, Maren Swenson, and Ally Duffy. The runners-up were Maddie Connolly, Esther Lynn, and Violet Lynn. Speaker awards went to Esther Lynn, Violet Lynn, Abby Orana, Maddie Connolly, and Maren Swenson. Our high school debate team also participated in the event by assistant coaching and serving as judges for the event. Tocco Middle School students in grades six through eight began their NY-- New York State ELA exams today. This was the first time the test has been given on a digital platform. On Thursday, April 11, Mrs. Benedetti and Mr. Calaswano hosted an overnight trip information meeting for all seventh and eighth grade families. Our overnight trips are right around the corner. Seventh grade will be heading to Boston on Thursday, April 25, and returning on Friday, April 26. Our eighth grade will be heading to Washington, DC on Wednesday, May 1, and returning on Friday, May 3. Congratulations to THS student Jane Sheldon for claiming victory in the Riteopia Winter Short Story Contest. The story "Home for Christmas" captivated the judges and received the prestigious award. Last week, nine members of our THS Student Government Organization participated in the 2024 Cota Youth Summit hosted and sponsored by the Harris Project and the Westchester County Department of Mental Health. Over 50 schools from our area participated together in the summit that was focused on mental health, pathways to substance misuse, addiction, and supporting student-led opportunities to improve outcomes. This week, our seventh and eighth grade classes were honored by a visit from Lily Newman, the Director of Community Outreach Prevention Education at the Maxwell Institute. Ms. Newman delivered a tailored presentation titled "Decisions Determine Destiny," aimed at addressing crucial topics relevant to our students. Through this session, students gained insights into pressing issues like vaping, adolescent brain development, and the cycle of addiction. Our DARE program kicked off in our seventh grade classes on Thursday, April 4. This program equipped students with essential skills to steer clear of alcohol, drugs, and violence, fostering a safe and supportive school environment by specifically focusing on resisting peer pressure and promoting positive choices. DARE empowers students to lead productive, drug-free lives. We are fortunate to collaborate with the dedicated officers of the Tocco Police Department for this initiative. Officer Maiden, a proud THS alumni from the class of 2013, has already become a beloved figure in our school. Thank you.
Great job. Next up is another wonderful student that I have the honor of presenting tonight, Jacob Liberati. His dedication, leadership, and academics have profoundly impacted our school district, making him a paragon of excellence in our community. His intent to major in education, PE, and health at Manhattan College, which I'm so happy about, as he's following in his parents' and his mother's and grandmother's footsteps, this fall further exemplifies his commitment to nurturing and advancing educational standards. Given Jacob's remarkable background, encompassing extensive service engagements, leadership roles with numerous student organizations, and exceptional athletic achievements, there is an unwavering confidence in his future success. Jacob's diverse experience, ranging from significant volunteer work with organizations like Habitat for Humanity and participation in impactful events such as breast cancer awareness walks to poignant remembrances through reefs across America, showcases his deep commitment to making a meaningful difference. His leadership journey is equally impressive, having held positions such as Vice President of the Student Government Organization, President of the Varsity Club, a pivotal member of the GIO, Vice President of SLATE alongside active participation in Vocal Cats, Robotics Club, and Yearbook Club. These roles have not only highlighted Jacob's multifaceted talents, but also his innate abilities to inspire and mobilize his peers towards collective objectives. Jacob's academic endeavors, marked by his role as captain of both the varsity baseball and football teams during his junior and senior years, have been characterized by exceptional skills, dedication, and sportsmanship, enriching both his teams and the school's sports culture. Given Jacob's extensive involvement, leadership, and scholarly achievements within our district, there is every reason to believe he will excel in his chosen field of major at Manhattan College. His deep-seated passion for education and health, combined with his practical experiences in leadership and service, position him uniquely to thrive and significantly contribute to the ever-evolving landscape of education. The school district rejoices in Jacob's accomplishments, and we're so happy you're gonna go on and become a teacher, and eagerly anticipates the positive impact he will continue to make in his academic and professional journey. Jacob?
So as for the athletic updates, first, I'd like to say each of our winter varsity athletic teams were awarded the Scholar-Athlete Award by the NYS Public High School Athletic Association. To receive Scholar-Athlete team recognition, the team's average GPA for 75% of the roster must be greater than or equal to 90%. Our spring varsity team media day and barbecue will be held on Saturday, April 27. This is always a special bonding moment for our athletes and coaches. Our varsity softball senior game will be held on this Friday, April 19, against Alexander Hamilton at 4:30 PM at the Colter. The rest of our senior games will be upcoming this May. Also, our varsity softball team has been invited to participate in the 2024 James Ace Mortobito Invitational Tournament for this first time in school history. The tournament invites 16 of the top softball teams in all of New York State to this prestigious tournament. Our team will be traveling up to Binghamton, New York to participate in this tournament from May 3 to the 5. This past Saturday, members of our pioneer team visited Manhattan College to participate in the 42nd Annual Manhattan College Games. Our team enjoyed a variety of games, sports, and other events throughout the morning. Special thank you to students and faculty of the Manhattan College Kinesiology Department for hosting this wonderful event. Special thank you to Tocco Athletic Council for our donation for the indoor batting cage for our high school gym. With all the unpredictable weather that this spring has been, we will be getting a ton of work done, being able to use and being-- I'm sorry-- being able to use this as a welcome great addition for our athletic department. Next month, we will have team-by-team seasons and playoff updates to report out. Thank you very much.
You both did such a great job, and were so informative, and now you both can go and do your homework. Bye, great job.
Thank you. All right, next up is our first presentation tonight. We have two presentations tonight. One is on Cottle, William E. Cottle, from the principal and assistant principal, and then we have another final presentation on the budget. Okay, so you're up. Marash?
Are you using the screen?
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. John Marash and Dr. Christopher Keough, who will lead us through an in-depth examination of how reading is taught in elementary grades within multi-tiered system of supports. This is a complex process with many components. We recognize the uniqueness of each student, and tonight we will outline our framework and discuss how we collaborate closely with families and teachers to ensure that every student receives the support they need. Our approach is flexible. We are prepared to implement interventions when necessary. The structure we present is intricate, and research requires us to allow intervention time to run its course. This is not a matter of complacency or inaction, rather it reflects our dedication to maintaining students in their least restricted environment by applying research-based interventions effectively. Tonight, we will delve into the details of the system and illustrate its impact through various case studies, bringing theoretical concepts to life.
Read is good?
Read is record.
Read is record. Okay. All right, so, good evening, esteemed members of the Board of Education, fellow attendees, and community members. Tonight, we are thrilled to showcase the remarkable progress made in literacy at the William E. Cottle School. Our presentation will highlight the implemented procedures and programs, those currently active, and provide insights into our future endeavors. Tonight, we'll outline our comprehensive, multi-tiered Systems of Support, or MTSS, which we've refined over recent years. The essence of our approach lies in the systematic clarity, continuous monitoring, and rigorous data analysis that guide our adjustments and improvements. This includes extensive training and professional development grounded in ongoing research. Our MTSS framework encompasses both behavioral and academic supports. For behavior and social-emotional well-being, we implement systems that encourage positive behavior through collaboration among teachers, counselors, and support staff. This begins with whole-class initiatives like Rethink and our PAWS program at Tier 1, and extends to more personalized interventions at Tiers 2 and 3, which may involve counseling or family partnerships. These efforts are aligned with our academic strategies under response to intervention, ensuring we address any overlap between behavioral and academic challenges. Additionally, our RTI process focuses on the detailed monitoring of student progress, quick identification of gaps, and adaptive adjustment to teaching strategies. Tonight, we will delve deeper into the three tiers of RTI specifically within the realm of reading. A response to intervention, or RTI, triangle is broken down into three tiers. Here, we can see the current percentage of students at Cottle in Tiers 1, 2, and 3 relative to the typical RTI triangle. Cottle is within or below the typical expectations for RTI at each level of tiered support. Tier 1 refers to the first level of instruction and support provided to all students within the general education classroom. This tier focuses on high-quality, evidence-based core instruction delivered by the classroom teacher. Tier 1 instruction is designed to meet the diverse learning needs of the majority of students, including those who are at or near grade level. Typically, around 80 to 90% of students should be in Tier 1 of an RTI triangle. Tier 2 refers to the second level of support provided to students who require additional interventions beyond what is provided in Tier 1. These interventions target specific skill deficits that may be impeding a student's academic progress. Tier 2 interventions are typically delivered in small groups and may involve more frequent or specialized instruction compared to Tier 1. At Cottle, the Tier 2 reading intervention frequency is that of three times 45 minutes per week pullout in a small group with an interventionist. This should typically constitute 5% to 15% of the RTI triangle. Tier 3 refers to the highest level of support provided to students who require intensive interventions beyond what is offered in Tiers 1 and 2. These interventions are highly targeted and individualized, addressing typical skill deficits that have not responded adequately to previous interventions. Tier 3 interventions are typically delivered in small groups or one-on-one settings and may involve specialized instruction, resources, and monitoring. At Cottle, the Tier 3 reading intervention frequency is that of five times 45 minutes per week pullout in a small group with an interventionist. This group of students should typically constitute less than 5% of students should be in Tier 3 of an RTI triangle.
So we're gonna spend some time on that Tier 1. In Tier 1, the general education classroom setting, our reading instruction is grounded in structured literacy, or the science of reading, which integrates educational research, neuroscience, speech pathology, and linguistics, and this comprehensive approach forms the foundation of our methods and strategies across grades K through 5. Consider this simple model up here. Reading comprehension results from the multiplication of two critical components: word recognition, such as decoding, and language comprehension. If a student excels in one component but struggles in the other, their reading comprehension is compromised. Amidst debates over the emphasis on language comprehension versus phonics, our program ensures development of both skills. Notably, following the release of New York State's Best Practices Briefs in January, it's clear that Cottle's approach is already aligned with the latest guidelines. You may remember this reading rope from a previous discussion. This diagram captures all of the different skills that move us to skilled reading. So the reading rope is segmented into lower and upper strands, each representing a fundamental category of reading. So at the base, the word recognition strand, this encompasses phonics, decoding, the sight recognition of familiar words, and these skills, through practice and repetition, converge to bolster accuracy, fluency, and automaticity. So, do I recognize the sound "c"? Do I recognize the code "cat"? And do I recognize the word "cat"? On the top, we have language comprehension, which includes background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge. Each component is vital, contributing to the young reader's ability to make sense of texts, infer meaning, and connect the material on a deeper level. Have I ever seen a cat? Does my vocabulary include the word "feline"? And this journey towards becoming a skilled reader is one that we've all undertaken, and it's intricate and multifaceted. So this underscores the need for deliberate skilled instruction, sustained practice, comprehensive assessment so that we can target the instruction to the right strand, and responsive intervention. Our K-5 literacy initiative is built within that conceptual framework. This approach employs two distinct ELA programs tailored to progressively develop language comprehension. In the initial stages of literacy development, students engage with the Wonders Program, which lays the foundation in language comprehension and reading strategies. As students advance to the upper elementary grades, the curriculum evolves to include teacher-developed thematic units. These units encompass a diverse array of text sets, including novels, informational text, and media, designed to enrich students' reading experiences and deepen their understanding. Early literacy skills such as phonemic awareness and decoding are methodically introduced through foundations and hegemony. These foundational skills are emphasized in the early grades and then seamlessly reinforced throughout the student's progression to ensure mastery and automaticity by the end of third grade. Complementing our reading programs, the Hockman Method, also known as the writing revolution, this method promotes structured and organized writing from the sentence level, integrating writing instruction with content learning. Vocabulary development is another integral part of our literacy program. In grades K-2, explicit vocabulary instruction is provided through the Wonders Program. Looking ahead, we aim to implement a pilot of Wordly Wise in the upper grades in alignment with the middle and high schools. This inclusion, detailed in our budget proposal, is designed to teach words explicitly throughout the year, providing multiple opportunities for practice and reinforcement. As a whole, these Tier 1 reading tools collectively form the backbone of our Tier 1 reading program. Each component is carefully selected and integrated to ensure our students not only become proficient readers, but also develop a lifelong love of learning and reading.
Our commitment to a comprehensive and dynamic literacy program extends to the specialized units of study introduced in the 2019-2020 school year. These units were meticulously crafted by our teachers to align with the New York State ELA standards, ensuring a seamless integration of high-quality literature with requirements. Each year, dedicated time is allocated for our educators to review and refine these units, guaranteeing that they remain relevant and effective in light of any changes to the standards and responsive to insights from assessment data. These units of study are designed to do more than just meet educational standards. They aim to elevate our students' learning experiences. By incorporating enduring issues that will feature prominently in middle and high school curricula, students engage with material that is both knowledge-intensive and directly related to broader educational goals. What these units of study represent is a springboard to deeper exploration into vocabulary, writing, science, and social studies. We have included this graph simply to illustrate that there are many different reading programs available for different use-- I'm sorry-- districts to use. In a survey of local districts, you will see there is a diverse sampling when it comes to programs districts select. Right now, the most selected reading program in the region is Teachers College Reading, often supplemented with programs like Foundations and Hegarty. It's notable, however, that despite the prevalence of Lucy Culkin's Teachers College Reading Program, there is ongoing discourse regarding its efficacy, with some research suggesting it does not consistently yield the desired outcomes. Consequently, an increasing number of districts are exploring alternative approaches aligning with the science of reading, including the development and implementation of district-created reading programs tailored to align with state standards and along with their district's specific student populations and educational goals. This shift reflects a growing recognition of the importance of flexibility and customization in meeting the diverse needs of students and educators within each district. Data-driven assessment is a vital part of measuring students' progress. We use multiple measures of student progress. I-Reddy is administered district-wide in grades K through 8. As a reading diagnostic, it assesses students' basic decoding and comprehension skills. It has been nationally a norm, and research has indicated alignment with New York State assessments. This is administered universally to all students so that we can reflect on our programs as a whole and calibrate our MTSS system. You'll see the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy, or DIBELS exam, is administered through all grades K through 5. This allows us to pull apart disparate skills. So while I-Reddy allows us to capture that equation represented in the simple view of reading, DIBELS allows us to pull apart the different strands of the reading rope. In our budget proposal, we presented on M-Class. This is a digitized version of DIBELS, which allows for more advanced progress monitoring, dyslexia screening, and reporting mechanisms. All this while teachers constantly conduct formative and informative assessments as they monitor students' daily progress and pick up any early indications that a student may be having difficulties. Meetings in which student needs are discussed involve these closer-to-the-ground assessments reviewed in the context of larger assessments like I-Reddy and DIBELS. You'll also notice we have other assessments that give us data related to word recognition and language comprehension, both Foundations and Hegarty assessments that allow us to monitor student progress, while the core literacy assessment is used to help us dig deeper into potential comprehension gaps. Here is an example of one of the ways we are tracking and monitoring student data. Each class has a data wall, which tracks students' data related to our school or local assessments, such as DIBELS and I-Reddy. This example has student scores organized and color-coded based on beginning-of-year expectations. This spreadsheet was designed by our interventionists and is used when reflecting on class progress and individual growth. However, since this was all designed in-house, some more robust reporting features and pattern detection is necessary. This is why in our budget proposal, we request additional funding for M-Class.
So with all of this data within the Tier 1 framework, we embrace a philosophy of continuous improvement. Our process includes a cyclical approach to curriculum evaluation and enhancement, focusing on identifying gaps, implementing solutions, and sharing successful strategies. Each grade-level team reviews performance data to identify a specific problem of practice for focused improvement. Teams determine a benchmark assessment to gauge the issue, followed by the implementation of targeted instructional interventions. The effectiveness of these interventions is measured through post-improvementation assessments, and then those outcomes and strategies are shared at faculty meetings, enabling the adoption of successful practices across grades. So as an example, our third-grade team reviewed state assessment data and decided to focus on enhancing vocabulary through the use of word letters. This strategy led to students outperforming regional counterparts in vocabulary-related standards on our state assessments. This year's focus has shifted to understanding the central message, lesson, and detail in texts, and by mid-year, DIBELS data showed an impressive 83% of third graders reading on or above grade level. And we network this improvement. The sharing of effective strategies across grade levels further enhance our collective ability to meet the diverse needs of our students, exemplifying our dedication to continuous improvement. What works for one grade may work for another. And lastly, within our Tier 1 framework, we recognize the need to individualize instruction and meet the unique needs of each student. Some require additional support or seek further challenges. This led to the implementation of our WIN, or "What I Need" period, to cater to these varied needs without removing students from our core program. Starting next year, this approach will be systematically integrated into the daily schedule for all students in grades K through 5. This WIN period is strategically scheduled to balance various demands, ensuring that students can access additional services such as special education or music education without missing out on that core education experience. This flexible time slot also allows for small-group rotations, specialized activities, STEM enrichment, I-Reddy modules, and many other enrichment activities such as book clubs, writing assignments, and mathematical challenges. During observational walkthroughs, Mr. Marash and I saw firsthand a diverse range of activities taking place. It was in February, and we saw students working on Black History Month projects, practicing touch typing, and exploring creative writing, and also thriving in an environment that allowed them to meet their individual needs. For academically gifted students, our proposed budget includes provisions for an enrichment consultant. Dr. Goodman, Mr. Marash, and I met with parent advocates for these specific enrichment opportunities, and we see the WIN period as an opportunity to deliver such stimulating, engaging, challenging experiences for our high-achieving students. So our vision is to expand the MTSS model that we're talking about tonight, from a triangle that works on structuring those needs on an as-needed basis to more of a diamond that equally structures those high-performing students and their needs as well. So within the Tier 1 framework, we identify students that need additional support beyond what we're providing in this program. So that's when we look at using data to provide Tier 2 and Tier 3 services.
Now we will explain in greater detail the path that a student will travel for learning or academic RTI in reading. learning or academic RTI in reading. Building off the idea of being least restrictive and finding the right balance of intervention while keeping students in the classroom, as mentioned, Cottle has a three-tiered approach to RTI for reading. Using data collected from formative and summative assessments such as I-Ready, unit or topic tests, quizzes, and others, along with teacher observation, a classroom teacher may find a student would benefit from reinforcement in foundational skills in reading. This leads the teacher to the first tier in the RTI process. Tier One really has two parts. Tier One is considered general instruction to all students in reading. Tier One at Cottle is also an opportunity for a formal, targeted intervention implemented by the classroom teacher as a small group or individually. The intervention is developed by the classroom teacher and a Cottle interventionist. Families are notified by the classroom teacher that their child is beginning Tier One and Y. A Tier One intervention referral form outlining areas of concerns, data, and an intervention plan is also submitted to the office. So what you see on the screen is the first page of the initial Tier One Reading and Math referral form. In the corner there, the teacher has to complete the date, has to write in the date that the form was completed, the student name, grade level, which is a dropdown. I'm sorry, it's a little hard for me to see, Chris. The classroom, the classroom teacher's name. They also have to identify if the student is ENL and if the student has an IEP or a 504. If the student has an IEP or a 504, we ask that they identify the classification. They also have to put down when they contacted that student's family and how they contacted. Then they also have to go into the strengths of the student in the areas of reading, mathematics, and behavior. And then they can elaborate on that on the section underneath.
Go ahead.
There we go. The second page is where they outline the concerns that they have in reading, math, and observable behaviors, and they elaborate on that. And then they have the section where they put the data that supports those concerns. This is the page that outlines the intervention to be implemented by the classroom teacher. Tier One intervention must be conducted a minimum of 45 minutes per week individually or in a small group in the classroom. A Tier One frequency equals two rounds of six weeks. Following Round One, the classroom teacher and interventionist submit a progress report that reviews the student's progress supported by data, and the teacher and interventionist make any necessary changes to the intervention as the student begins Round Two. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge that the MTSS and RTI model implemented at Cottle was crafted collaboratively by the entire instructional support team. There wasn't a predefined template for this level of data scrutiny and supervision. Members of the instructional support team acquainted themselves with various RTI models, programs, and benchmark assessments. It's the dedication and diligence of our instructional support team members, along with the commitment of all Cottle teachers that truly propelled the success of this model for all of the students at Cottle. There we go.
Really?
Yeah. Okay. So this is the first page of the progress report for reading and math. The top portion is basically the same up to when the teacher contacted and how they contacted. Then they have to elaborate on how the Tier One intervention went and how it was implemented. And then they have to put the data that was collected during the duration and the progress monitoring data that was collected during the duration of the first round of the Tier One intervention. The next slide is actually the third page of the progress report. Again, it's the same. This is where the teacher outlines what the Tier One intervention will look like for the second round. This is actually the second page of the progress report. So following the conclusion of a full Tier One intervention, the classroom teacher and interventionist have three options. The student may continue to respond to the Tier One intervention. However, it may not yet show mastery of the targeted skill or skills and therefore initiate a third round of Tier One. The student may have shown enough growth and mastery of the targeted skill or skills, and therefore the decision would be to discontinue the Tier One intervention. The student may not have shown growth or enough of a response to the Tier One intervention, and therefore the decision would be to bring the student to the Cottle Instructional Support Team for further review and discussion. I'd like to highlight that the approach outlined here is based on recommendations and research regarding the allocation of time for Tier One intervention implementation. Nevertheless, it's essential to acknowledge that there are occasional deviations from this standard practice. In some cases, students, many students may progress through the tiers more swiftly than anticipated, illustrating the variability and individualized nature of academic growth and intervention effectiveness. Also, please note, there are similar referral forms available for OT, speech, and behavioral, social, emotional concerns. Those referrals go directly to IST. The Cottle Instructional Support Team, or IST, is comprised of administrators, school psychologists, guidance counselor, speech and language pathologists, classroom teachers, and interventionists. IST meets weekly. When a student is on the agenda, we discuss what prompted the classroom teacher to begin the Tier One intervention, examine the Tier One intervention plan, and review progress monitoring data. All of this is outlined in the initial referral form and progress report we just reviewed. The IST will then make a decision about next steps. If the recommendation of the IST is to begin additional tiered service for reading, families will be notified. Tier Two means the student has qualified for a more intensive pull-out service in reading. These services are conducted individually or in a small group in a separate location from the student's classroom. The intervention is being delivered by an interventionist. At Tier Two, the frequency of an intervention goes to three times per week for 45 minutes per session for a minimum of 10 weeks. At Tier Three, the frequency is upped to five times per week at 45 minutes per session for a minimum of 10 weeks. Like a panel of medical specialists analyzing a specific case, our team of educational experts systematically reviews data, weighs various factors, and coordinates with families. Our goal is to strategically apply interventions and avoid unnecessarily removing a student from core instruction. Just as doctors would not remove an appendix to cure a stomach ache, we aim to ensure that our interventionists are precisely, have precisely targeted and are truly necessary. An interventionist is a specialist in responding to academic concerns based in both literacy and numeracy. At Cottle, our interventionists are trained in Orton-Gillingham approaches. Meanwhile, a reading specialist may not necessarily have that training. Thanks to investments in building staff capacity supported by the Board of Education, we have built a model where the interventionist working with students has a toolbox that far exceeds what New York State requires for their literacy-certified teachers. Academic interventionists play a pivotal role in detecting students who require additional support. They utilize a variety of assessments and observations to pinpoint areas where students may be struggling academically. Once students are identified, interventionists collaborate closely with teachers and other service providers to develop personalized intervention plans tailored to each student's unique needs. As mentioned throughout this presentation, these plans encompass not only academic support, but also behavioral and social-emotional interventions, recognizing the holistic nature of student development. But the work does not stop there. Interventionists diligently monitor student progress, tracking improvements over time and adjusting interventions as necessary to ensure continued growth and success. This ongoing progress monitoring is essential for identifying what strategies are working effectively and where adjustments may be needed. Collaboration is key in this process. Interventionists work hand-in-hand with teachers, families, and students themselves to ensure a unified and coordinated support strategy. By fostering strong partnerships and open communication, interventionists help create a supportive environment conducive to student success. Last, but certainly not least, interventionists serve as advocates for our students. They ensure that students have access to the necessary resources and supports needed to thrive academically and beyond. Whether it's advocating for additional services or accommodations, interventionists are dedicated to advocating for the best interests for our students at all times. While I will not go into the intricacies of this chart, the flow map is another way to illustrate the key stages of the RTI process led by interventionists, teachers, service providers, and administrators at the Cottle School. Overall, the flow map provides another visual representation of the comprehensive intervention process, highlighting the key stages involved in supporting the academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs of students within Cottle School.
So let's take a look at a case study. And here we'll look at two sample students in different grades, all with the names removed. One of our first cases will focus on the first part of the simple view of reading, the decoding piece. And the second case will deal with comprehension. So Student A, a third grader at William E. Cottle, on his initial benchmark assessments conducted at the start of the academic year, there were issues with decoding, specifically reading, he was reading below grade level. So his teacher collaborated with our interventionist and crafted a tailored Tier One support plan. The student is not reading automatically and often struggles to sound out words correctly and recognize them on sight. This observation is supported by both classroom and benchmark data. Student A's I-Ready scores are below the expected third-grade level. DIBELS assessments reveal Student A struggles with blending, managing only 20 words per minute with a 20% error rate on a third-grade passage. Additional core assessments indicate a lack of mastery and foundational skills. In response, the teacher and interventionist design a flexible intervention to be delivered during WIN over six to 12 weeks, incorporating sound drills and multimodal support alongside the regular instruction he's receiving in the Tier One program. This plan will be adjusted as needed based on the student's progress. So this brings us to our first check-in. Student A has shown marked progress in reading nonsense words, significantly improving in his ability to read whole words automatically, a clear sign of better phonetic understanding and fluency. There's also an increase in reading speed. Student A is reading more words per minute on grade-level passages. However, challenges remain with the accuracy, indicating that while fluency has improved, precision still needs enhancement. He's making errors, and he's not necessarily going back and fixing them. The classroom teacher and interventionist will celebrate these achievements, but also focus on refining the intervention plan to address the ongoing issues with accuracy, ensuring that Student A's reading skills continue to develop. Halfway through the intervention period, the Core Phonics Survey echo results showing significant progress. I-Ready growth monitoring assessments also show notable improvement with a 10-point increase over the previous scores from the beginning of the intervention. So six weeks after that first check-in, the teacher has decided to not only continue with the current intervention strategy, but to enrich it by incorporating the Hegarty Program. Recognizing it for its focus on phonemic awareness, Hegarty will provide daily practice in isolating, blending, and segmenting, segmenting and manipulating sounds. So over the next six weeks, the enriched intervention plan will go in place. So after the first six weeks with the additional data, they made some changes to that initial Tier One plan. This is that report here, where now, an additional six weeks into the program, Student A's progress remains evident, but it's slower than desired. The student continues to struggle with accurately recalling certain consonant sounds. This issue highlights a gap between phonemic awareness when isolated and its application in reading contexts. The teacher's analysis, based on mid-year's DIBELS benchmarks, an updated Core Phonics Survey, and Foundations Program evaluations, show that although Student A has made progress, Student A has not yet met the expected grade-level benchmarks. Given the situation, there's a clear need to reassess and possibly enhance the current intervention strategies with additional supports tailored to address Student A's specific challenges. The overarching goal is to move Student A from at-risk to securely on track for reading And that's where the IST comes in. After evaluating Student A's progress, the teacher and interventionist presented their findings to the IST. Due to the student's uneven progress in decoding and encoding, the IST unanimously recommended a transition to the Tier Two intervention for more targeted support. In this intensified phase, Student A will receive specialized attention from the interventionist, primarily aimed at improving decoding and encoding skills. This intervention will start by collecting baseline data using the Wilson Reading Systems Program, setting a foundation for tailored instructional strategies. Interventionist used the Wilson Assessment for Decoding and Encoding, the WADE, to evaluate Student A's reading and spelling skills. Results show that while the student could recognize most high-frequency words, they struggled with phonetically regular and nonsense words, indicating a reliance on memorization rather than phonetic understanding. Additionally, difficulties in encoding, particularly with irregular high-frequency words such as said and was, were noted. These insights have led the interventionist to concentrate on enhancing Student A's phonetic decoding and encoding abilities. The WADE will be administered again at the school year's conclusion. Wilson Reading Systems allows for real-time tracking of student progress and responsiveness to instruction. For each student, the teacher maintains a detailed progress chart that looks like this. A key performance indicator within these are formative assessments that determine the student's ability to accurately read a set of 15 real and nonsense words with a benchmark of successfully reading at least 13. For Student A, these ongoing assessments have highlighted specific areas of difficulty. Errors signal a need for continued focused intervention to continually address the foundational aspects of literacy for this student. Complementing Wilson's formative assessments, DIBELS is an additional tool that we use for progress monitoring. Over the weeks, evaluations have begun to show signs of improvement in Student A's reading skills, indicating responsiveness to some of the intervention strategies. However, despite some positive developments, the pace remains slow, with certain errors such as vowel confusion not aligning with the developmental expectations we have for this age. So with this data, the interventionist convenes a meeting with the IST to review Student A's progress. The interventionist advocates for escalating the level of support to Tier Three, based on the belief that additional intervention time and more individualized, intensive strategies could better accelerate the student's learning progress. Today, the student is receiving intensive support through Tier Three. If the student makes minimal progress and growth, a consideration for a CSE referral will be discussed by the IST. Our second student has demonstrated issues with comprehension. At the beginning-of-year assessments through I-Ready and DIBELS, it was noted that the fourth grader in Student B excels in decoding but struggles with comprehension. In response, the teacher and interventionist analyze data to help develop a plan to improve Student B's understanding of the text. The teacher noted that areas of concern include fluency and comprehension. Data from DIBELS reported that the student was on the cusp of being a proficient reader. The student was slightly below the cutoff benchmark scores for a proficient fourth-grade reader at the start of the year. A chart to compare them can be seen on the side. The student also scored below grade level on I-Ready and showed that they needed additional support on classroom assessments in ELA. So, ah, jumped ahead maybe. After reviewing classwork and benchmark data, the teacher and interventionist set out a support plan for Student B, focused on enhancing comprehension skills such as identifying main ideas and understanding the function of text features in nonfiction. This primarily takes place during that WIN period we mentioned. The plan also includes fluency modeling and practice to improve reading speed and accuracy. So we arrive at our first progress report six weeks later. And after six weeks of intervention, the teacher and interventionist reviewed Student B's progress. The student has shown marked improvement in oral reading fluency, achieving an increase of 90 words per minute at 96% accuracy. Additionally, performance on classroom assessments and quizzes has improved with a notable score of three out of four on a main idea progress monitoring quiz. To further support comprehension and expression, the teacher has incorporated graphic organizers into her lessons, aiding in structuring written responses to demonstrate text understanding. The teacher and interventionist agree that another round of Tier One is appropriate for the student based on the progress that he is making. We come to the second progress report six weeks later, where the interventionist and teacher meet to review Student B's progress. The teacher observed that while Student B continues to improve in the targeted areas and is increasingly self-sufficient, occasional support is still necessary to maintain these gains. Upon reviewing the mid-year assessment data, significant improvements were noted in Student B's reading fluency, achieving 120 words per minute on the DIBELS benchmark. Additionally, he showed enhanced comprehension skills on the DIBELS MACE assessment, which measures the ability to construct meaning from text. The I-Ready mid-year assessment also reflected that the student B has met benchmark goals for his grade level. Given these comprehensive gains, the teacher has decided to discontinue the structured intervention while remaining prepared to provide support as needed going forward. Student B is an example of a student who was flagged, responded to an intervention, and was not in need of further consideration for special education.
And now we talk about the history of this process and how we have communicated our efforts with stakeholders. We strive to ensure that the arts... We strive to ensure that the RTI process is communicated clearly and comprehensively to our Cottle families. An outline of the RTI process can be accessed on the website. Additionally, we have shared and discussed our RTI process at Board of Education meetings, principals' coffees, and most recently, through a community video at the start of the school year. We acknowledge that there may be occasional challenges with communication. At times, parents may express a desire for their child to receive immediate small-group reading instruction, Tier Two or Tier Three, expressing concern over the perceived length of time it takes to initiate such services. It is crucial to recognize that the decision to provide specific services is based on data analysis, which may not always indicate an immediate need. Our aim is to adopt the least restrictive approach to providing support, meaning that we do not rush to implement intensive reading interventions five times per week if a student's needs can be addressed effectively at the Tier One level. However, we want to reassure parents that their input is valued and listened to attentively. Once again, it's essential to emphasize that the duration as to the need for and frequency of reading support is a collaborative effort. No single individual, whether a teacher, parent, or administrator, makes the decisions about who receives services independently, but rather it is a team-oriented decision. In many cases, we meet with parents to address their concerns, discussing the data and levels of support their child is receiving, which often helps alleviate parental concerns. We have heard the request for the WIN period to be implemented in fifth grade five days per week. We too see the value in WIN one period per day in Grade Five, just as it is in Grades K through Four. We are happy to report that working with the fifth-grade team, we have found a way to implement WIN in fifth grade five days per week next year while maintaining our full content specialty model, a model that we continuously, continuously hear positive feedback from middle school teachers and parents. Given that background, this chart illustrates the many programs, supports, and assessments that have been steadily and methodically implemented over the course of the last five years in order to better address reading at Cottle. We have heard some say that programs at Cottle are introduced and then shortly are removed. As you can see, this is not the case. New programs that were introduced have in fact been extended into other grades and continue year to year. As evident, programs like Foundations, Reading Wonders, Haggerty, and Units of Study have been implemented and sustained over the past few years. Similarly, assessment tools such as I-ready and DIBELS have been introduced or gradually integrated, and not only persist, but also contribute to our continuous improvement efforts through the insights provided by their data and resources. Furthermore, our successful partial and full content specialty models in Grades Four and Five are always undergoing refinement, while our WIN period remains in place and, as previously mentioned, is scheduled to expand to five times per week in Grade Five. Looking ahead, our Grade Four and Five ELA teachers, along with all interventionists and special education teachers, are currently undergoing training in Linda Mood Bell. This initiative is poised to launch next school year. Additionally, as outlined in this year's budget proposal, we anticipate piloting wordly Y's in Grades Three through Five. Moreover, we are excited to enlist the support of an enrichment consultant to further bolster the academic growth of our high-achieving learners at every grade level, integrating this support seamlessly into our daily instruction and enhancing the effectiveness of our WIN In closing, we want to thank Dr. Goodman for her leadership, her trust, and her expertise. Of course, we also thank the Board of Education for their non-stop support of all of the students and teachers at Cottle. I would also like to take a moment to express my profound appreciation for the extraordinary dedication and tireless efforts of the exceptional educators at Cottle Elementary School. Our teachers, psychologists, interventionists, and guidance counselor have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the success and well-being of our students. As we've seen tonight, these remarkable professionals have gone above and beyond tirelessly keeping pace with best practices, implementing new programs, and integrating benchmark assessment tools into their daily practices. They've invested countless hours in professional development, becoming proficient in a multitude of programs to ensure they are equipped to provide the very best for our students. I am truly honored to work alongside such a dedicated and passionate group of educators. Their unwavering dedication and hard work inspire me daily, and I am continually impressed by their commitment to excellence. As we continue our journey of academic growth and student achievement, let us never forget the invaluable contributions of our teachers, psychologists, interventionists, and guidance counselor. Together, we will continue to make a difference in the lives of our students and empower them to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Cottle, and Dr. Keough, and our IST, our teachers, and all the families and students that helped with this program evolve and thrive. I want to say something about Cottle now because we mentioned in the presentation that so many districts are still using TC as their main model of teaching reading, and we are on the forefront of looking, even before New York State came out with their whole research on the ineffectiveness of just using TC. And we dived into Foundations really quickly and Haggerty, and we were on the forefront of that. While other districts are still keeping TC and implementing Foundations and Haggerty, we have, we are, we are well-advanced from other districts in terms of teaching reading in the best research-based practices. I am also honored to oversee this whole district and Cottle in particular, who has been a leader in reading. Teachers have really dived into this reading strategies, and they have really worked hard on it, and our principals, and our assistant principal, and Dr. Keough have been on the forefront of teaching reading. And the IST model has been a labor of love, and it's changed drastically from when I first came here. If some of you might have recalled, I was Special Education interim director, and there wasn't a process at all like this. And everybody, the teachers and the staff went to training, and I think it's really pretty much of a great model. And I thank Mr. Marash, Mr. CoGallen, Dr. Keough, and all the teachers and staff at the Cottle School. So I just wanted to say that. Now, I know it's a long night, everybody, and we'll try to, I'll try to talk really quickly. All my other budget presentations get quicker and quicker, but this one still has to be a little bit in-depth, because it's the night that this proposed budget will be voted on by the board. So, good evening again to our Board Trustees, faculty, families, and members of the community. This evening, we present our budget for Board Adoption. Our district's budget is a reflection of our core values and priorities grounded in our focus on equipping every student with the tools for excellence. A special note of gratitude goes to Ms. Faith Sparks, our esteemed business official, for her exceptional management of our budgeting process, prioritizing our students' needs while also maintaining our financial health and future sustainability. Thank you also to Dr. Christopher Keough, who helped to align curricular, instructional, and technology resources district-wide. The budget I present tonight for the Board's approval is a culmination of collaboration, innovation, and hard work of our teachers, administrators, and the support of our Board members and community stakeholders. Our district's mission is to prepare every student for excellence, is articulated through the goals presented here, to enhance academic performance for success in college, career, and citizenship, to foster robust relationships between the district and our community, and to ensure fiscal responsibility and sustainability. Our budget is constructed upon the four foundational pillars outlined in our strategic plan. As a result, the proposed budget advocates for the integration of social-emotional learning, supports contemporary teaching and learning strategies, introduces programs designed to cater to the varied needs of our learners, and invests in professional development to enhance our capabilities in achieving our ambitious objectives. Our district takes immense pride in the support of faculty and staff. Our exceptional fine arts and performing arts programs, our innovative use of technology, underlining our unwavering dedication to innovation and excellence in education. In line with our forward-thinking philosophy, we are at the forefront of ensuring our educators are well-equipped with the skills and knowledge to effectively integrate artificial intelligence into teaching and learning while adhering to the highest ethical and educational standards. We enrich our students' educational experiences beyond the traditional classroom setting through engaging extracurricular activities and impactful community service projects. Fundamentally, we are committed to ensuring every child receives a strong start to their educational journey. Our universal pre-kindergarten program lays the foundation for our lifelong passion for learning, embodying our commitment to early education excellence. This dedication extends to foundational skills with a strong emphasis on research-based writing and early literacy programs. This slide highlights the remarkable achievements of our students across various disciplines, underscoring the combination of their hard work, our faculty's dedication, and the supportive environment of our school district. Our students have earned over $6 million in scholarships this year. Tocco High School students were recognized as national merit finalists, and our Millan High School teams have made notable strides in science Olympiads. The Cottle Chess Program participants have excelled in strategy and sportsmanship, securing wins in local competitions. Our debaters have displayed outstanding rhetorical skills, achieving success in regional competitions, and hosting inclusive events. Innovative initiatives have blended visual arts, music, and science, resulting in unique artistic expressions, music renditions, and engaging events. Beyond academics, our students have excelled in athletics, arts, and extracurriculars, receiving all-league, all-conference, all-section, state, and national honors, reflecting their diverse talents and hard work. Community service clubs have enabled meaningful contributions to our community. Participation in STEAM, Art Club, Habitat for Humanity, and more enriches students' experiences and fosters a culture of curiosity and service. In the arts achievements in NISM and Remarkable School theatrical productions like Annie stands out. These accomplishments reflect the dynamic spirit and diverse capabilities of our students, highlighting our holistic educational approach that prepares them for academic excellence and societal contribution. Now, of course, I have to have this up again because I'm so proud of it. In the latest rankings by U.S. News &amp; World Report, our schools placed in the top 100 of all New York State public high schools. Our journey in these rankings has been a testament to our collective effort and dedication. We have experienced a remarkable climb over the last four years. Our progress has also echoed in Westchester Magazine's list of top public high schools. Over the past few years, we've climbed from the 35th spot in our county to 16th, as I say, right under Ardsley. So I think we're doing really well. Such accomplishments are a direct result of the hard work of our teachers and staff, administration, and the unwavering support and investment of our Board and from our community, and we appreciate that. Now we review proposed budget changes. In our proposed budget, we aim to enhance our educational offerings through additional staffing for AP courses and high school electives, counterbalanced by reductions and course restructuring as outlined in the second column of our presentation. Furthermore, we suggest the introduction of an academic interventionist at the middle school level modeled after the successful implementation you just heard from Cottle. Our proposal extends to launching new middle school electives in general music and podcasting alongside an algebra lab specifically designed to enable freshman students with an IEP to complete Algebra I within a year. The proposed budget involves a modest increase of just 0.2 full-time equivalent FTE positions across the board. This increase is facilitated by targeted program reductions such as phasing out the Bosie's Artists in Residence Program, thereby freeing up resources to enhance our music education with the addition of a 0.8 FTE band and orchestra teacher at Cottle and a .2 FTE general music teacher at the middle high school. Additionally, reducing one section at Cottle paves the way for a middle school interventionist. In terms of professional learning, we're refining our learning-active, technology-infused classroom training, Summer Institute, aiming for cost-effective improvements in teaching these strategies. Addressing the need for more challenging content for advanced learners, as we heard tonight, we're investing $12,000 in training for Cottle staff to support high-level engagement, and $2,000 for middle and high school staff to provide Tier One interventions and support. We're also rolling out a peer technology coaches program with a $15,000 stipend budget to support in-house professional learning. Additionally, we're allotting $15,000 in funding for literacy coaches at the Millan High School to support literacy strategies across all content areas, aiming to enhance students' text comprehension skills at the middle and high school. These initiatives represent an additional $12,000 in our overall budget, with plans to use Title II A grant funds to help cover a majority of these costs. In terms of curriculum budget, we're extending our math program with $3,500 investment in SABSS and VISIONS Math Digital License for Grade Seven, aligning our K-8 math curriculum. In social studies, we're investing $7,150 for a three-year extension of the Middle Ages curriculum for Grade Six, and $13,600 for the same extension period for the American History curriculum in Grade Seven and Eight. For language arts, $5,950 will be used to purchase, update the American History curriculum in Grade Seven and Eight, and for language arts, $5,950 will purchase the AP Language and Composition Curriculum Materials, Ideas, and Arguments to bolster critical thinking and writing skills for college readiness. As we talked about tonight in the previous presentation, the M-Class DIBELS platform with a $13,800 investment supports early literacy and includes dyslexia screener for our youngest learners. We really feel it's important to find out students that have dyslexia through a screener when they are young, and we're really happy that it's in this budget, and we hope that it's supported tonight. Mr. Marash and Dr. Keough spoke to this tonight. Another $12,600 is allocated for wordly Y's, enhancing vocabulary development across the district. We understand that vocabulary development is important for our students from when they are young through high school and through college, so we want to make sure we get that into this budget. We also are introducing news ELA, an informational news text platform for high school students with 2,800 budget, and investing $6,000 in NO-RED Inc., a standards-aligned writing platform for middle school students. Remember, we brought that in last year for high school, now we're bringing that to middle school. Additionally, we're investing in new textbooks for our AP Environmental Science and World History, each at $8,000 to provide students with current content that meets college-level standards. Our AP Chemistry and Honors Chemistry courses will also see an upgrade with an additional $2,015 investments in more rigorous textbooks. We're excited to expand our course offerings to include anatomy, and physiology, sports medicine, astronomy, climate issues, and general music classes for sixth and seventh graders. These new courses, requiring initial materials and supply investment range from $200 to $8,700 plus annual costs, are designed to cater to our students' growing interest and future career needs. For the general music classes, we're allocating $2,000 for audiovisual recording equipment, fostering an interactive and dynamic music learning experience. Our summer programming supports transitions between our schools and ensures all students will obtain credits for, necessary credits for graduation. The summer schools program for Grades Five to Eight is being added to our budget with a $9,700 allocation for instruction and preparation. This was done before with COVID funds, but we're adding that to our budget. We feel it's very important for our middle schoolers. This program is designed to enrich students' knowledge and skills over the summer. Recognizing the need for summer school for credit recovery and regions' preparation, we're also allocating $7,008 to higher-certified teachers to ensure students needing credit recovery or regions' exam prep receive focused instruction through online programs and from certified teachers. As we adapt to post-COVID educational needs, we're discontinuing the TIGER program due to the decreased demand. Instead, we're introducing a tutoring funds pool with $4,600 to provide personalized, on-demand tutoring support reflecting research-based approaches for helping students meet graduation requirements. Furthermore, our collaboration with Eastchester Community Alliance Program, ECAP, will continue Furthermore, our collaboration with Eastchester Community Alliance Program, ECAP, will continue. It was funded with, again, COVID funds before. We're adjusting to two hours a week with one teacher at the cost of $5,110. And you heard a lot from our student representative about how well we also are doing in sports, and we're continuing with that. The proposed changes in athletics demonstrates our commitment to continuing to expand our offerings to meet the needs of our student body while also adhering to the ever-changing landscape of state and local regulations. The addition of JV boys soccer team and modified boy lacrosse teams are new teams that would be effective for the 24-25 school year. The projected enrollment based on actual participation rates and surveys amongst our current sixth-grade students will support the need for these two additional teams for the next school year. This creates further grade and skill-appropriate placements for our scholar athletes. The budgetary implications would be hiring one coach for each program. Last year and this year, we have offered JV boys lacrosse. Based upon the age ranges of our participants, we are recommending transitioning from a JV boys lacrosse team to a varsity boys lacrosse team for the 24-25 school year. The budgetary implementation would be increasing the stipend to a varsity-level position. The next item is a recommendation to establish a fund for helmet and protective gear replacement, specifically for sports of football and lacrosse. Helmets have a shelf life of 10 years, and many do not pass reinspection for that full span. In order to ensure we have enough helmets, last year we established a helmet reconditioning and replacement plan. This budgetary implementation would support this plan while allowing us to not negatively impact our other sports program. And then, NIFSA passed a new rule effective for the spring of '25 lacrosse season for the implementation of shot clocks. The shot clocks must be present and visible on both goal lines on opposite ends of the field. We will need to budget to purchase and install these new outdoor shot clocks for the 24-25 school year. To remain current and competitive with our neighboring districts and our salary for the position of athletic trainer, we are recommending a modest increase in salary for our athletic trainer. Lastly, to remain competitive in this section with our neighboring school districts, we are recommending a modest increase in our winter season cheerleading stipends to make the stipends equitable compared to our other sports with similar time commitments and to maintain the qualified and competent coaches for these positions. Proposed changes in extracurricular, an additional art club section at Cottle School due to increased interest in art club participation across the grades at a cost of $2,302, and creating a middle school drama club with one-act performances by restructuring the improv club similar to what William E. Cottle does, so the middle school students can do their own production, and perhaps the high school students can do their own production next year, which would give the high school students a benefit of having more students participate and choosing a play that might be more appropriate for high school-level students, and giving the middle school students a chance to shine. So, we're excited about adding that.
The proposed 24-25 budget includes provisions to transition our onsite network server, which will be at the end of its useful life and service in April of 2025, to having the server hosted at the Southern Westchester Bosse's Lower Hudson Regional Information Center. This strategic move not only establishes redundancy to mitigate potential outages, but also positions us at the forefront of the dynamic technology landscape. This transition expanded, this transition facilitates expanded capabilities, enabling us to leverage AI, artificial intelligence advancements, and potentially explore virtual reality applications in the future. Additionally, this initiative includes an upgrade for our soon-to-be-outdated-and-legacy TLS telecommunications lines to fiber optics, paving the way for increased bandwidth for future needs. The $96,000 cost for this will be offset by the $40,415 cost savings of the completion of the 1920 school year installment purchase agreement. Fortunately, the district secured grant funding through the E-Rate Emergency Connectivity Funding Program, amounting to $174,000, which was used to acquire 500 touchscreen Chromebooks. This funding also removes the necessity for an equipment installment purchase agreement for Chromebooks in the upcoming years. As you see in the footnote, the subsequent years to 2024-25 school year, the $96,000 will be offset by both E-Rate funding and Bosse's aid, bringing the net annual costs down to approximately $40,000 per year. With these aids being paid in the year after they are spent, the biggest impact of this transition is felt in the year of implementation. For the 24-25 school year, we are also proposing to enhance our onsite technical support by adding a part-time junior network specialist contracted through Bosse's in the amount of $37,000. As we continually integrate new technologies into our systems and adapt to the ever-evolving landscape of technological advances, the demand for onsite tech support becomes increasingly crucial. The addition of technology often introduces complexities from hardware configurations to software integrations. With each technological upgrade or introduction of new devices, the requirements for maintenance, updates, and user support grow. By adding additional part-time onsite support, such as a junior network specialist through Bosse's, we aim to not only meet our current needs, but also position ourselves to adapt seamlessly to future technological developments, ensuring a resilient and well-supported technology environment. The net budget increase for technology is $92,585. The 24-25 budget preserves the existing allocation of $45,000 for transfers to our special aid fund aimed at supporting mandated special education extended school year programs in accordance with IEPs. Additionally, the budget continues to allocate $50,000 for transfers to the capital fund, which is intended for capital improvements not classified as major capital projects. The intention behind these funds is to facilitate the replacement of significantly deteriorated flooring in identified classrooms at the middle high school. Additionally, these funds may be used for substantial pipe and HVAC system repairs, and also some masonry repairs. The 24-25 budget will include a new allocation of $20,000 transferred to the School Lunch Fund to address its deficits. This transfer is legally required, as revenues from the School Lunch Fund cannot be utilized to offset account deficits.
To sum up, the initiatives we just presented amount to $309,485 in total. The initiatives and modifications we just covered represent only a portion of the changes proposed for the 24-25 budget. It's important to note that changes and fluctuations to the budget happen annually, regardless of whether new initiatives are introduced. Next, we will delve into the specifics of the revenues and expenses that make up the proposed budget.
We would like to start off by reviewing some of the changes from the March 11 proposed budgets. Changes were not made to the overall budget total, just to the revenue budget composition. Since the March 11 meeting, we explored ways to reduce the levy to stay below the maximum tax cap without any budgetary reductions. These proposed adjustments were thoroughly examined with the Finance Committee, and we updated the Board accordingly. Tonight, we asked the Board to consider approving a revised and reduced tax levy increase of 1.94%, recognizing the effect such increases have on our taxpayers. This is below the tax cap limit of 2.06% and is the lowest increase we've proposed for seven years. We also propose to allocate or use $110,000 from our ERS Reserve Fund for next year's budget. Included in the changes is a proposal to lower appropriated fund balance by $70,000 from the March 11 proposal, which is a 0.9% decrease from the current fiscal year, moving us towards sustainable budgeting practices. Again, these proposed changes were thoroughly reviewed with the Finance Committee and affect only the budget, the composition of the budget revenue. We will dive into these changes later on in the slides. First, we will examine the elements of the proposed expenditure budget for the 24-25 fiscal year. The proposed 24-25 expenditure budget remains as it was in the last meeting. The proposed budget is $41,795,300, which is a 4.19% increase, or an increase of $1,682,240. This chart shows the summary of the proposed budget by function. A school budget function is a category that groups together expenses based on their purpose, the purpose they serve, like teaching, transportation, or central administration, helping to organize and plan how schools spend money. We are seeing significant increases in insurance, central services, and technology. Now, to discuss an overview of our 24-25 proposed school budget revenues. This chart outlines the revised proposed revenue budget and includes the adjustments to revenue previously shown. This revised proposal has the tax levy increase at $604,960, or 1.94%. This is now below the maximum cap. Our last presentation had the levy at the 2.06%. It also details the allocation from our ERS Reserve Fund to cover a portion of next year's ERS pension expenses. That's the second-to-last line on the chart. ERS pension costs are the percent of salaries, the pension costs, it's the percent of salaries for non-certified staff, so not teachers. It's all our clerical staff, our custodians, anyone that is not a teacher is in ERS. So, that is, that, we are using, we have a reserve set up to save for that in the future as those pension rates fluctuate drastically. So, we are proposing to use some of our reserve to pay for the expenses in next year's budget. This demonstrates our commitment to fiscal prudence and consideration for the taxpayers. As of last week, the state passed their fourth budget extender that ran through April 15. We believe there is an approved budget as of yesterday, however, the details have yet to trickle down to us. It is understood that progress has been made in persuading the governor to withdraw the proposed Save Harmless cuts. The Save Harmless provision ensures schools do not receive less funding than they did the year before, regardless of population loss. However, we have yet to find out if this proposal or the inflation adjustment proposal, which adversely affects all district irrespective of their funding level, remains. So, we still are not 100% sure. Moreover, she indicated changes to the formula for foundation aid for education funding will come in next year's budget, and the state education department will conduct a comprehensive study over the next year on foundation aid. So, while we might be status quo this year with no change to the formula, it was made clear that if it does not change this year, it will be changing next year. These revenue revisions were discussed again and reviewed in depth with our Finance Committee. The overall total budget did not change, and the proposed revenue budget is still $41,795,300, a 4.19% increase. This chart illustrates the tax cap formula. It shows the maximum amount we could legally levy, which is $31,882,132, which is a 2.06% increase. However, we are proposing a levy of $31,842,132, which is a 1.94% increase. This chart shows the history of our maximum allowable tax cap levy in the black columns, so that's the amount each year we legally could levy the percent increase versus the actual percent tax levy increase in the orange columns. The 24-25 school year will be the lowest increase since 2018. Forecasting our year-end fund balance is an important part of the school budget development process. Fund balance forecasting allows us to make strategic decisions about resource allocation, investment priorities, and revenue diversification to ensure the continued operation and financial stability of our school district. The chart presented in this slide illustrates the distribution of our initial fund balance and forecasts where we anticipate concluding the year. At the top of the chart, you will see our non-spendable and restricted fund balances. Approximately 76% of our fund balance is allocated for restricted, specific purposes. These reserves were instituted to safeguard the taxpayers from unforeseen emergencies that could potentially lead to program cuts, reductions, or indebtedness costs that could be on the books for many years. Also shown in this chart is the conservative year-end projection. We project we will end this year with a highly unusual, non-recurring, significant surplus, primarily driven by two main factors. This year, we received a one-time payment of prior-year building aid. We discovered that the state made an error in our formula for building aid, which they acknowledged was a clerical error dating back to 2018. Over the years, the amount of this error accumulated to $940,000. After persistent advocacy efforts, the state made us whole this school year as opposed to putting us on the prior-year state aid claim list, which is currently a 25-year wait. Another variance to note is record-high interest rates. Interest revenue is projected to exceed the current budget by $800,000. Interest earnings is a highly volatile revenue that has the potential to fluctuate drastically, and we cannot budget as if these rates will remain status quo. It would not be prudent to fund recurring expenses with this highly volatile revenue. We have adjusted the 24-25 interest revenue budget to reflect higher interest rates while still remaining conservative to provide financial stability for the future. Absent of these two one-time revenue anomalies, our surplus would be approximately $567,000. These projections are monitored closely and will be revised as we get closer to the end of the school year. Why do we have reserves? Risk management. Reserve funds mitigate risks associated with highly volatile liabilities such as tax surchargeary judgments and spikes in pension contribution rates. Having reserves in place can protect the taxpayers by minimizing the need for drastic measures like incurring debt or large tax, very large tax levy increases in response to unforeseen circumstances. As you will see on our next slide, tax surchargeary claims are one of the most volatile and unpredictable liabilities we have. In years past, we have had to refund in one school year over $1 million in tax cert claims. Taxpayers are currently still paying off debt incurred from tax cert bonds that the district issued in 2008 and 2010. Financial stability. Reserve funds provide financial protection against unexpected expenses, revenue shortfalls, or emergencies. This stability ensures that essential services can continue without interruption even during challenging economic times. It also allows our district to absorb the financial impact of successful challenges over time rather than facing sudden budget shortfalls that could disrupt educational services or necessitate emergency measures. Another reason we have reserves is funding for capital projects. Additional capital improvements remain imperative as our buildings age and issues continue to arise. The practice of planning ahead and systematically saving for capital projects and other contingencies is considered prudent management. Saving for future capital needs will reduce or eliminate interests and other costs to taxpayers associated with debt issuances. In uncertain economic times, reserve funds provide schools with a budgetary option that can help mitigate the need for budget cuts. Another important note to highlight is that we've recently received information from our insurance consortium regarding upcoming changes to deductibles. It appears schools might soon face a $1 million deductible for wind damage resulting from named storms. While we're waiting for more information with this, this is one of the benefits of having a reserve, is this is a real possibility for us. The Finance Committee will meet in May to review reserve funding recommendations and the possible creation of additional reserves. So, now to touch on tax surchargeary claims. I've presented this chart before. Tax surchargeary claims present an unpredictable financial challenge for school district, particular very small ones like ours. The accompanying chart illustrates the significant fluctuations in refunds from year to year with no reliable predictive tool at our disposal. To mitigate this volatility, our tax surchargeary reserve fund serves as a safeguard to taxpayers. For instance, the district is still repaying debt from tax surchargeary bonds we had to issue in 2008 and 2010, amounting to $220,000 for the 24-25 school year. These bonds are set to mature in 2030. I continue to emphasize the substantial impact of tax certs on our modest district budget, and noting that our reserves are currently funded, the tax surchargeary reserve is currently funded at 39% of potential exposure. funded at 39% of potential exposure.
Our proposed budget for the next fiscal year is carefully crafted to strike a balance between delivering high-quality education and maintaining fiscal responsibility. We've navigated the challenges posed by revenue constraints and expected cost increases to ensure we utilize every available resource to support our students, staff, and community effectively. The core elements of our proposed budget serve as more than just a financial document. It's a strategic blueprint guiding our district towards a future marked by excellence in education aligned with our strategic plan goals. We expect to be even higher on the charts than all of those magazines. This budget highlights our commitment to both professional development and the launch of innovative educational initiatives, recognizing our faculty's pivotal role in student achievement and investing in their continual growth to directly elevate our district quality. The budget prioritizes academic enhancements through both targeting tutoring funds and strategic partnerships, funds for gifted students, and aiming to equip every student with the necessary resources and support for success. It introduces new courses and expands extracurricular offerings from advanced STEM subjects to comprehensive arts programs, widening students' learning opportunities, enabling them to explore and follow their interests, and to have really strong transcripts that colleges can see when they get to that age and they're applying. Inclusivity is at the forefront of our planning with significant enhancements to special education services, ensuring every student's needs are met, supporting their ability to flourish. The budget also underlines the importance of technological advancement, aiming to bolster our tech infrastructure to facilitate personalized and effective learning experiences reflecting our commitment to modern, student-centered educational approach. This budget embodies our district's dedication to fiscal responsibility and long-term sustainability while creating a vibrant, inclusive, and forward-thinking educational community, supporting our students, empowering our educators, and engaging our wider community in our collective journey towards continued excellence. Important dates. We've had other budget presentations also. These are the recent ones, March 11th Superintendent's Proposed Budget, which, and then tonight is the Board Adoption of the Superintendent's Proposed Budget and Spotlight on COTL Presentation. May 6th is the Budget Hearing, and May 21st is the Annual Budget Vote and Trustee Election. These are very important dates, and don't forget to mark your calendar for May 21st for the Budget Vote and Trustee Election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marash and Dr. Keo for that great presentation. Appreciate that very much, and thank you Faith and Amy for the budget presentation. So, long but all good stuff, both very, very important. So why don't we just open it up, we'll only take one at a time. If we, if anybody has any comments or any questions about the first presentation, the presentation about COTL reading programs, I'll start at the end. Scott, do you have anything, any questions, any comments?
Sorry, is that good, Gary? Thanks, sorry. So, do we, is there a number of teachers that are actually certified in reading at COTL, a specific amount, just that have certified in reading, besides trained in Orton and Wilson, but certified in reading?
I don't know, I mean, certified in reading. So in terms of being a reading specialist?
Correct.
There are teachers at COTL that are certified reading specialists. There are interventionists. In terms of the number of teachers that are, that have that credential, I would have to double-check. I don't want to give you an incorrect number.
Do you think we, in your experience being in the building, do you think we need more teachers certified in reading?
As we said in the presentation, you know, the interventionists have a plethora of trainings and certifications, some of which that are beyond the requirement for New York State reading specialist or reading specialist certification. So I think that the, or I know, that the interventionists that we have in COTL are exceptional. They have a variety of tools in their toolbox to address reading concerns as well as concerns in mathematics.
So if I can just also talk about this?
Sure.
Because I think this has come up a number of times, and we talk about how teachers have been trained in reading in the past. And the teachers' college model has been the model that reading teachers have been trained in, and elementary teachers have been trained in. And colleges are now being part of the state education. They want colleges to start teaching reading in a more scientifically research-based way. So the reading teachers, I'm not putting down reading teachers, but I'm saying that having a college-trained reading teacher right now until they change their curriculum, I, and that's why we're bringing in our own training for our teachers, because we have been ahead of the curve. I think the colleges are now starting to change their reading about that. They're trying to change the way colleges teach teachers to teach reading. But they haven't been up to that level of the level we are right now.
Got it, okay. I guess one more. I was, I'm happy to see that the win period's coming back for the fifth grade, having a son in the fifth grade. That was, hearing from a lot of the parents, what was the decision to bring that back? Well, I guess, why was it removed this year, and what's the decision to bring it back for next year?
Well, it wasn't removed this year. It was also not in place last year.
In place.
So we still had the win period both last year and this year. As I said, we're always refining and enhancing both the full and partial content specialty models. We met with the fifth-grade team, and we said, okay. We see the value in the win period. The win period is outstanding. It really is. So, yes, it does involve a change and an adjustment in the schedule, and that took a lot of creative thinking. But we're ready to roll it out next year. We're excited to roll it out. The fifth-grade teachers have come up with some really creative ways to utilize the win period five days a week, different structures that are not necessarily used at different grade levels this year. So, you know, it did come down to creative scheduling, and we had to make adjustments in the master schedule, but we were able to do that.
I'm glad it worked out.
And I just wanted to say one thing about that, too, that Mr. Marash brought in the win period, and we very much appreciate that you did that. It's a great, it just was a great idea. A lot of schools, not a lot of schools, a few schools have it, and I'm glad that we have it, too. And we also listened to the community and what parents were saying, and we're always open to the ideas from the board.
Yeah, I think that goes a long way, John, with the community, you know, just listening to the parents in the fifth grade. I know that was one of the big things, and I'm glad you're bringing it back next year for, you know, because the fourth graders are obviously used to it, obviously they didn't have it. So I guess leading into that is...
Actually, I can add to that real quick.
Yeah.
Which is conferences.
Correct. I was going with that one.
So, I realized as we were presenting that we didn't find a way to build that in.
Right.
But yes, I'm happy to say, of course, we did hear that feedback. And again, working with the fifth-grade team, where we were able to find a very creative way to bring back conferences, opportunities, and time slots for all families during parent-teacher conferences similar to that that they've experienced in K through four. Again, I commend the fifth-grade team on really thinking outside the box and finding a way to put that in place. Again, I do want to stress that you could contact and have a meeting with your teacher or teachers at any time.
Sure.
Even outside of parent-teacher conferences, you, every parent has that option. But we did find a way that we can have time slots for all parents with fifth grade. And again, the initial complication with that and hurdle to get over is every fifth-grade teacher teaches 100 kits. So that's 100 conferences.
That's a lot.
So we would have to figure out how to do that. And again, I commend the fifth-grade team. We found a way to do that.
And I appreciate that. It's, so it's well-received. Thank you.
Cynthia?
I first want to just recognize and thank you both, because that presentation was really very involved, thorough, must have taken a lot of time and effort. And I think it's even evident from seeing it how really there is a whole-team approach and how, how much work that took even to develop that whole tier system and program. I haven't, yeah, I remember when it was starting, and it was great to see like the progression of it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, kudos to the whole team, the teachers, and everyone who puts the effort in, because it is a lot of work. I did want to ask just only one question, because it was so thorough. It was with these six-week timeframes that you have?
Yeah.
Do teachers, or even if parents want, like that there's, that you meet beforehand, thinking that either kids aren't progressing quick enough or have progressed too quick?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. As I did mention at one point throughout the presentation, yes, there are times where you deviate from the model. This is a model that's in place, and it's research-based, and, you know, for the most part, we do end up following the model and the recommended research-based frequencies. But absolutely, there are times where we have to deviate off of that. They're few and far between, I will say, but it does happen, absolutely. And we have to recognize, that's why it's a variable model, really. We have to be able to adjust and adapt to different learners.
That's really all I have.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Agree with Cynthia, thank you. That was really very well done, very thorough. I appreciate that and your time. So just, I guess piggybacking a little bit on what Scott was asking, just so that I have clarification, because we're talking budget, and this is sort of a nice putting everything together with what you presented. So your tier three, where you're pulling children out, so to speak, are you small groups?
Yeah.
Right? So K through, that happens K through five, I assume, right?
Five, yes.
And so with the amount, now you gave us percentages, and I don't really know, obviously, what that number looks like, but for K through five, those tier three that have those small groups, how many, how many teachers or providers, if that's a better word, or how many teachers do we have that do that, that sit with that group and/or that one-on-one?
Sure. So we have, we have 2.4 interventionists. So basically what that means is we have two full-time interventionists, and our STEAM teacher teaches .4. She serves as .4 interventionist as well. So that would be the answer to the question.
Okay, that's it. And then the, so interventionists, just in listening to it, they almost sound like a case manager to me, if I was to put it in. Is it, it's because they're overseeing things, they're seeing, but they're also providing the service?
That's, yeah.
Okay, that's where I lost, okay.
Yeah.
And we have two?
Point.
Point, four, okay. Are we asking for more, because did I miss that? Are we asking for, in your, in your recommendation for this budget?
Not at this time, no.
We actually added one last year.
Yeah, I know, I didn't know if we wanted to get into that. That's probably best for Amy.
Well, we ended up having to reduce teacher, or something like, something happened, and we were like, you know what?
Right.
We're just going to do an interventionist there. So they really did get more, and we didn't, we didn't take it away.
No, and the, the chart that I put up there towards the end with the five, well, the last five years, including this year, and then one year ahead, that outlines where we went from 1.4 to 2.4.
Right.
Which was last year, and that is maintaining for next school year. So we actually had the addition.
Okay. And so that, those two, correct me if I'm wrong, they're, they're doing three, and are they also providing for the IEPs? Are there IEPs that are pulling kids out for one-on-one also?
So, the building-level services are available for students that have IEPs, but currently our interventionists only, there is only one student that has an IEP that gets building-level services, and that is in mathematics. Outside of that, the interventionists are only working with building-level students.
Only under the banner of AIS, or under that?
Through RTI, AIS, or MTSS.
Okay. I'm just, I'm, the only reason I'm, I'm trying to dig down a little bit, this is I, some of the feedback that we've gotten is that, you know, parents having, you know, they always, listen, it's always a moving target, and that's why we want to make sure that when we're raising our hand, that we feel that the building is staffed enough and children are not, not getting services and/or are delayed, or any reasoning around a staff reason, right? So that's kind of what that question is.
And if, if I had those concerns, I would, I would, I would go right to Dr. Goodman, and I would explain it, and I would back it up with, you know, whether it be numbers of students that we have, and we're starting to get to a point. But, but no, and going back to your students with IEPs, normally students that get to that point of needing reading support, usually that will be accommodated through their individual support plan.
Right.
Their IEP.
Right, which is majority in the classroom, I assume, like the co-teach model.
It depends. It depends on the student's IEP. It could be ICT, eight-to-one, twelve-to-one, depends on...
And then you coordinate with, obviously, the Director of Special Ed to make sure that everything is there that's needed as far as the staffing in the building.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, every year.
That was some feedback that we did.
Sure, yeah.
I'll also mention, in terms of working with the Committee for Special Education, when students go through the process that we described and then are referred to special education, there's all that data that helps to pinpoint the needs and the ways that we can better construct an IEP that meets their needs. So it works in tandem, you know, the IEP process and the RTI process as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just one final question is, what, what is, one of the, one of the slides had it, I just picked up on one thing, said district created a reading program. So we talked, you talked a little about worldly-wise and the different things that you have, I mean, that's vocabulary. What is our reading program at COTL?
So, the reading program at COTL is a blend of things. So we have Reading Wonders K to 2, and that is supplemented with Hegarty and Foundations in grades three to five, as we presented, it's the units of study. But the units of study are novels along with additional texts, articles, things like that, but the teachers, and again, this was rolled out in the 1920 school year. Every year, they ever find and fine-tune them, and it's, the units of study are built around enhancing, you know, parts of that reading rope that Chris presented on, vocabulary building, background knowledge. So that, that's the reading program that we have currently. And again, we look to bring in and pilot worldly-wise next year in grades three through five.
And is that a reading program?
That's a vocabulary program.
Vocabulary program, okay, all right. Last thing, just real, so, and this is sort of just a, when I, when you gave those examples, I appreciate that, because it really put context to what you're doing, having the two case studies.
The student A B, yeah.
Students, yeah. The one that, the student that I, as to my last question, because I know it's getting late, but the student that was in fourth grade that was identified, which is a very realistic story, and they're identified in fourth grade now, or third grade, rather, going into fourth grade, and they're identified in third. So when they get to fourth and fifth, how, what, no, so we did Wilson to third grade, so what did, who, what does fourth and fifth look like for them?
In terms of their intervention?
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to remember what they...
For programming purposes, like we know...
That would be, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I was going to say, I think that student, in their win period, they were receiving additional supports in identifying the main idea. So it might be setting specific goals in terms of using informational text or something like Nuzella, and then working with them to identify that, giving them like additional teaching in that area, to see if that supports their ability to do that in the tier one environment. And in that case, that was found to be successful, just that additional reteaching helped that student kind of re, you know, get back on track.
So just, and just, just let's say that doesn't work, and now they, they go the CST...
IST.
IST, thank you. And they get an IEP, and they're in fourth grade. I'm just throwing out different, different, different ending, maybe. What, so, and the, the point I'm making is, I, when I hear programs that go K2 or K3, why don't we do K through, like, six? I mean, I, like, in other words, the continuity, I like that, so I think it's great that there's this constant upgrading and bringing in DIBELS and bringing, these are all great because they're giving more information, it's always good, more programming, Lyndon Mubell might be comprehension. I think those are all great things, and I support that with the budget 100%. The one thing that I, and this is just to throw it out there, and we have Dr. Sweeney here, too. I wonder why we don't have a one program that goes through with all the other things that you could also dip into when needed.
I think for the most part we do, and I'm trying to, so the cases that we showed...
Like, we don't really take foundations past third grade. We take it to third grade, right?
But we might pull on foundations materials if a student is demonstrating like second grade level ability.
In fourth and fifth.
So we'll pull from that foundations. So it's really like, we have a toolbox, and the intervention that we select is based on that student's needs. And since the interventionists are consistent K through five, that toolbox is also pretty consistent.
But they're not with the interventions if they go to IEP?
No, so, but there, they would get all of the data that said we used this, this is where we saw success, and then that IEP will be constructed, again, with, you know, more specificity to that student's specific needs, but pulling from data. It might be, you know, it could include a continuation of foundations or Wilson reading systems, you know, I know those are used also in the special education program. But in terms of that tiered support, generally you'll find that we're relying on Wilson reading systems. And then to your point about comprehension, I think Lyndon Mubell will be our more go-to for those comprehension students, especially student B, would be a student that would be a good candidate for Lyndon Mubell.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Could I just add, too, because it was something we had in the presentation, but the presentation was a little long, so we...
It was longer than that, believe it or not. There's a director's cut.
It was, but you, you did ask about those units of study, so I wanted to elaborate on, you know, the background knowledge and vocabulary building. The units of study are also deeply interconnected with other subjects, so, such as science and social studies. For example, fifth-grade students explore "I Survived the Galveston Hurricane," blending elements of science and history, while fourth graders delve into historical fiction like Pedro's journal. Our emphasis on background knowledge... Journal. Our emphasis on background knowledge further enhances the units of study with each grade level focusing on themes that build upon foundational knowledge from the earlier grades. A prime example is in third grade, a unit centered on human rights, featuring texts such as "The Hero Two Doors Down" by Sharon Robinson, Daughter of Jackie Robinson, alongside "An Examination of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights." So, units of study also bring about a tremendous amount of cross-curricular discussion.
And we're also able to build those, you know, the third-grade example you're talking about, was used, was designed, looking at the region's requirements for high school social studies, so the enduring issues essays that they're doing. So, those themes were pulled into the elementary, so the idea of using a teacher-designed, you know, thematic unit allows us to make those connections a little bit more central to what we're doing here in the district.
Thank you. No, and I just want to, I'll let Pete finish, sorry. Last thing I want to say is, having, you know, now, my, we've gone, I've gone through the whole, you know, Cottle, and middle, and high school, is really, and I think it's great that, that we're, as a district, focusing in on early, and I think that, you know, comprehension and vocabulary, we can't wait till they're in middle school and high school, because if you wait, really, my, my mind, you shouldn't wait past kindergarten to identify something. But, if, and if you identify something in third and fourth grade, you need to be able to have what they need in that particular place and time, with it being an everyday, almost, thing. But, my point is, I just want to thank the district for really focusing in on that, and I would, I would hope that as we go further, that we, we prevent those delayed or late referrals, so to speak, that then cause children in middle and high school to feel like there's no, it is hard to catch up. So, I do hope that we're giving every child the intervention early, as early as possible, and as much as they need, so that when they get to the middle school, they can thrive. And honestly, the enrichment stuff's great, too. I don't want to always pick, you know-
Yeah, no.
Right? I mean, I think we still, we have to really look at that spectrum and say, there are some children that really need, and that's one thing the district I've heard, too, we don't have enough enrichment. We don't have those really bright kids get, you know, bored. So, I think that we need to look at all those things, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And just to echo on what you said, you see, the budget does include enrichment in elementary school. We did have parents come and meet with us, and we understand that. And it doesn't mean that a student won't qualify who's getting some of these services, too. I mean, but we want to make sure that we focus on kids that have special talents in addition to all the focusing that we're doing. And again, with those units of study, vocabulary is really important. And again, like you said, we have to start that early. What kids are able, I think we talked about this, SATs and ACTs, and all of that is a reflection of what, not learning vocabulary just in isolation, but learning vocabulary meaningfully in text is really important.
And that morphology, that after that third grade, you should continue on it, or in Gillingham, with breaking words down, so that's my, yeah.
And worldly-wise, yeah.
Those questions by all of you were so good that I don't have any. Those, really, everything was covered. Excellent questions, Laura. All the questions are good. So, I'll just make a comment. Great, great presentation, and really appreciated walking through those scenarios. I think that was really helpful, and leaves nothing to the imagination about how this is done. So, really appreciate that. Very, very helpful, very good to see that context. So, thank you very much for the time and effort there.
Thank you for the continued support.
Yep, got it, thank you. So, we can change gears to, to the budget presentation, which I would imagine would be a faster conversation, being that we've had several of these presentations already, and this is the final budget. So, I'll just start off by saying, great job by both of you, and also just acknowledging and thanking you for that, for that consideration, and that, listening to the board's feedback, and about trying to maybe get that levy down a little bit. You know, we're, you know, it's good for the community to know that this board is always thinking for the taxpayer. We're always looking for the taxpayer, because we're all taxpayers, obviously. And although we know the levy increases are important, we also want to make sure that they're balanced, and they're not excessive. And obviously, this is a, as you pointed out, one of the lowest ones we've had. But, we did, since the last presentation, we did kick, kick in some of the questions, and it led to the Finance Committee, because when we saw the additional surplus come in, and, and the reserves being, being pretty well-stocked, which is good, we, we had that question about whether or not we can get that levy down a little bit. So, I appreciate that work and that time, and I thank the Finance Committee for looking into that, and I'm glad we were able to get it down a little bit. I was hoping for a little bit further down, but, but I think, I think it's modest, though. And I get all the reasons why, why you have to be careful about that. Been on this board now over seven years, and I've come to sort of a little bit hate the tax cap, and I know that sounds weird, because the tax cap sounds like a good thing, and I think it's well-intentioned, like most public policies are usually well-intentioned, but, but sometimes they have, I think, sometimes inadvertent negative effects. And what I mean by that is that, because we have a tax cap, rightfully, our business manager, our superintendent, has to hedge every year against the next year not may, being able to maybe recoup from not raising taxes enough, right? So, you have this, this finite amount of, amount of percentage you can increase each year, and you want to be responsible with that, and you don't want to leave too much on the table that you can't go back and recoup, right? So, so I feel like then, over time, we wind up taking it because we have to, we should, right? And then I wonder, over time, if we're actually raising taxes more than we should. But, anyway, that's just a little side thought. I know the benefit of the tax cap is that it prevents the taxpayer from having a larger jump in taxes in one year, which is, which is a good thing. So, but anyway, I just wanted to say, I appreciate that, and I'm glad we were able to get it down a little bit. And, and I also appreciate your comments on the reserves, because since my time being on here, we have built those reserves up, and I'm very proud of that, and I know how important they are for a lot of reasons, all the reasons you laid out. Another one I didn't think, I don't think I saw on there, but it's an important one, too, is that it keeps our credit rating very, very high.
Yes, yes.
And that allows us to be able to borrow at a, at a lower rate, which is, which saves the district money over time. So, so good stuff. So, that's all I got. Great budget. I hope everybody, everybody's gonna support it. A lot of good stuff in there, a lot of things that are very much in line with our goals, and I think we got a lot of value out of the increase this year. So, I appreciate that. Great, great budget. Thank you. Laura? We'll go back down this way.
Okay, yeah, just a couple of questions. What do I want to start? So, the, Faith, if you wouldn't mind just explaining that 100, so when you, the 110 from the ERS, and why that, what your thought process was there? Because I think someone might be watching and saying, because one of the, the risk management, or the risk issues, which I think are important to point out, why the reserves exist, all right? And because people tend to think, okay, now you have more money, why aren't you, you know, spending it on this, or bring our, you know, we should bring our, our tax down even more. And as Pete alluded, there's reasons that are a little complicated behind that. But, so one of the risk managers that you mentioned was the pension and that percentage.
Yes.
So, then, so does it sort of counterintuitive to say, well, I'm gonna, right, use that? So, just maybe you could explain a little bit.
Sure, but if we're, we are looking to lower the levy, one of our, we have to find another revenue source. So, if we're not gonna collect it in taxes, well, where are we gonna get it? Well, it just so happens that next year, the, the percentage rate that the school district has to pay for ERS is rising significantly more than the teacher's retirement system is. Right now, you know, the average rate, it depends on tiers, is maybe in the mid-15%. There were years where it was at 20 and more. So, it might start to go up. I do feel that with our surplus, we will be able to replenish that reserve with more than we're using at the end of this year. So, and I think it's prudent for us to show the taxpayers, we have these reserves set up, and we are using them. So, we will use that money to pay a portion of our bill for next year. The ERS budget-to-budget increase was 0% for ERS expenses. We are gonna use that reserve. So, it does show that we are using our reserves. We will be able to replenish that. While it's not at the level we would, you know, want it to be at this point, it will be replenished, we anticipate it'll be replenished.
For those listening, can you just tell them what the ERS stands for?
Sorry, it's the Employees Retirement System. It's for any non-teacher, so our non-certified staff. It's the same pension system that the police and fire department is in, and all other New York State employees are in. The teachers have the teacher's retirement system. It's different. And the rates, the contribution rates are very different. But also, I have to say, New York pensions are one of the best, the highly-funded pensions in the country. It's a great, these are great systems. And districts have to pay a portion of salaries to the pension system to fund future retirement costs. So, these rates are variable. They're set by the state comptroller's office, and they tend to fluctuate, it's like a five-year average. They tend to fluctuate with the economy, so they will probably be increasing.
Okay, thank you. And, and also, putting money for our capital reserve is another important. This building is requiring a lot of upcoming repairs, upgrades, so that is something I think that's important for people in the community to understand, that we have this, you know, beautiful and historic old building that requires, unfortunately, sort of a, right?
So, I really want to echo that, even though we had a bond, we are finding that every time we, like, uncover something, we uncover something else. There are so many things to fix in this building, and we love the building, and it's beautiful, but it is old, and every day, there's something else. So, I really, that, that reserve fund is important. And look what happened at Cottle, just like a month ago, like, we had a whole sewage backup. I mean, we are running these big buildings that cost a lot of money.
Well, and I'll forget, the original reason why we set up that fund, too, is also to make sure we're putting money away for our turf field, which has to be replaced every, what, 10, 12, 10, 12 years?
Till 10 years, 12 years.
And that costs roughly, what does it cost again?
Well, Cottle Field was $1.8 million.
But, the, the high school field, though, what's, what's that cost again, usually to replace, like?
That's probably over two.
Over two, yeah. So, that was, the original intention was to make sure that we had that money, so we didn't have to go out and bond for it again. But, as Dr. Goodman is saying, there's a lot of other things that are popping up, so it's good that we have it.
And the thing that Faith brought up, that we just heard from insurance, about named storms, that the $1 million deductible, and the kinds of storms we've been having, if that-
The rains, great, yeah.
That could cost the district a lot of money.
Yeah, and, and meeting with the Finance Committee to discuss recommendations for other reserves, such as a repair reserve, I think would be really good. And, you know, our, our insurance, we don't really have an insurance company. It's an insurance consortium. We are an owner in it. They are absolutely fantastic. We met with them. They explained why these, some of these changes are happening, and you are probably all witnessing insurance increases in your homes, with your cars, and, and everything. So, it's just the nature of insurance right now. These storms are happening more and more, and the damage is pretty significant. So, they have to make sure they have enough reserves to, to protect us, yeah.
And then, my, the last thing I would just want to comment on, and thank you, Faith, for that clerical error, and that, you know, that was not, I just want people to understand, you know, this is above and beyond, and, and getting on the state, and really getting that, that what was owed just for a long time. And so, we really do, as a board, appreciate your hard work on that, and certainly, as a district, we feel very, and I'm certainly someone that's lived here for 20 years now, feeling that there's someone here that's really looking out for the taxpayers is really important. And it's, you know, we talk a lot about students, and obviously, that's, you know, the most important, but taxpayers are also up there. So, thank you. And I have one final question, and this is about sports. Dr. Goodman, girls lacrosse, I did not see on that list. I'm just curious, when you talked about lacrosse, is that, do you know, do we have it?
We do, we do.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't see it on your list.
But, we're not-
Ozon increase.
It's not, it's not an addition, yeah.
But, it goes to varsity, isn't that a change? Because we said varsity, boys, oh, but that's new. Okay, look at it. I just, someone commented, I wanted to just make, bring that up, so, that's an aside, okay.
Good, good point, though, about Faith, because you did present it very modestly, like, as if the state found, but you found a mistake in front of the state's attention, so, right, so, good, yeah. Good point, Laura, good point, Laura. Cynthia?
All right, I'll be very short, because you answered a lot. It was about the peer coaches, the peer tech coach and the literacy coach. It was grant-funded, you said. So, with the years, the next, the following years to come, how was that?
So, that's a grant that we typically get every single year from the state, so, you know-
So, we're hoping we continue to get it.
Yeah, yeah.
And the literacy coaches in particular, that's not the interventionist.
No.
That's also having additional coaches for middle school and high school teachers, because literacy is so important.
Okay. And then, the only other thing was the textbooks. Were they a combination of, like, real texts, like, that you hold on to, and digital?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I had, I had that question last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're mostly digital, I believe, but, yeah, go ahead.
I'll just echo what Laura said. Laura and I are both on the Finance Committee, so I know this budget probably better than my MX bill from last month. We've spent a lot of time on this as a group. Everybody had an idea what to, how to handle with this $940,000 that Faith found us. Pete had 35,000 ideas, I think, and we all came together as a group, which was great, with Dr. Goodman's input, along with the Finance Committee, myself and Lauren, for other individuals, Faith, obviously, and Dr. Goodman. And it's a great outcome for the community that, with the reserve and, and great work on Faith's part to find this money, that would have taken 25 years to get. So, thank you.
All right. And you would think we were dumb, but we're not. We're getting there, though. So, actually, this brings us to our first recognition of the audience, I believe, right? Is that where we're at?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. This is for agenda items only, not, not free-form, so if anyone has anything they want to say about the agenda items that we're about to vote on? Allison, please, please keep it to three minutes of again, Allison. Thank you.
Allison, hi, I'm from Milton Place. Two questions. One, just to, for what Laura had just said about the girls lacrosse. It's just that, in the presentation, you specifically highlighted JV lacrosse going to varsity and adding money on to that for boys, but you did not mention that for girls, and the hope is that next year, girls lacrosse would be a varsity team instead of a JV team. So, that's where the comment kind of came from. So, I hope that that is part of the budget. It's just maybe not an addition in money, and that's why it's not being mentioned. Second is, and I'm super tired, so maybe I missed it, but the talk about the band and orchestra instructor, did that change, or was that still in the budget? Did I miss that?
It's in there.
That was still there? Okay, I just missed it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to address or comment about the lacrosse, or no?
I'm just, I'm just, I will get back to her, because I'm just texting Andrew.
Okay, very good. Anyone else on, on budget item, I'm sorry, agenda items only? Nope? Okay.
Special Ed, who we just saw.
Um, so, if you don't mind, let, let, let us get through the, the agenda, because it's, and then, and then you can do it on the back end. Okay, thank you. All right, so let's jump into our agenda. So, first up is approve, a motion to approve a consent agenda items two through five, have a motion. Laura, second. Cynthia, any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor? Okay. Business to the board, adopt the budget.
Okay.
Resolved that the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, District's 2024, 2025 proposed budget be set at $41,795,300, and that this proposed budget be voted on by the community at the annual meeting on May 21st, 2024, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Cynthia, we've talked about this at length, so this is our budget. We're gonna adopt it. All in favor? Very good, thank you. Second, adopt Southern Westchester BOSI's 2024, 2025 budget. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District adopts a 2024, 2025 estimated administrative budget for the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services in the amount of $13,211,295. Tuckahoe's share is $163,599. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? Okay. Approve a Southern Westchester BOSI's trustee. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District casts one vote for John Philiberty to serve as trustee on the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the time period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2027. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura. So, we, we actually voted on this already, right? Robin, we had to do it again?
He was the only one running.
He's the only person running, yeah, right? Still the same?
Yeah, he is the only one running. We did already pass this resolution.
Right.
But, BOSI's required that we do it on a specific date.
Okay.
So, we were just a little bit ahead of it.
Okay.
So, this is just-
So, we're just doing it again, within the timeframe that we need to, okay. All in favor? All right. Proven agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approves the Iona University baseball field rental fee for the spring 2024 athletic season at a rate of $100 per hour, at an amount not to exceed $700 on the following dates, May 7th, 2024, May 13th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? Okay. Proven agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approves an agreement with the Westchester County Board of Elections for voting machines for the May 21st, 2024 school district budget vote and election. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? Proven agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approves an agreement with best trails and travel for transportation for the varsity softball team to Binghamton, New York, at an amount not to exceed $3,052.50 for, for this one-time service. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Cynthia, all in favor? motion? Scott, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Approve a contract. Resolved that the Board of Education approves a contract with Hudson Valley Charter Services Incorporated for transportation to Binghamton University at an amount not to exceed $2,800 for this one-time service. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Scott, all in favor? Approve a cooperative bid. Whereas it is the desire of the Marinerick Union Free School District to allow any officer, board, or agency of a political subdivision, or any district therein, adopt this resolution to bid jointly for coach-bus transportation services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Toccoho Union Free School District agrees to participate with other school districts, with the Marinerick Union Free School District as the lead agency, adopting this in the joint bidding of coach-bus transportation services. Be it further resolved that the resolution shall remain in effect until June 30, 2025. And there, and be it further resolved that it is agreed that the specifications as presented will be used, and that this board agrees to bid its required amount of said services jointly with other participating school districts and the Marinerick Union Free School District. The recommendation for the, I'm sorry, yep, the recommendation of the Purchasing Steering Committee will be considered when this board acts on the purchase of said services. Be it further resolved that the invitation to bid will be advertised by the Marinerick Union Free School District in the Journal News in accordance with provisions of Section IO3 to the General Municipal Law. Do I have a motion?
Just have a question.
Yeah, just motion real quick. Scott, Cynthia, question? Comment?
Faith, can you explain this a little bit more around this question?
So, we often have a need, as a district, for coach-bus services. These services are very difficult to reserve, and the prices fluctuate significantly. So there's been a lot of talk amongst purchasing agents and business officials to see, actually, I started it, if anyone has a bid that I could use, or an RFP for the service. And we all kind of discussed and thought it'd be good if we all went together. Because for, let's say, Toccoho, we might only have a handful of trips a year. We might not get any bids. But if most of the Westchester Lower Hudson schools participate, it might leverage economies of scale and maybe get some vendors that will provide this service and lock in pricing for it.
Makes sense.
So like, we gave them all our information, the dates that we use, like our trips, like what we use coach buses for. So, you know, they can use that to submit.
And then if these trips come up unexpectedly, then we just have to get into a new contract or something? How does that?
Well, there would be, like, wording in the bid that, you know.
Allocating so many trips a year?
Yeah, or like, you know, the hourly rate for the bus, this size bus is this. So if there is an unexpected trip, we can say, well, this is the price in the bid.
So we can piggyback off a larger district, basically?
Yes. Well, it's like a cooperative bid. So like, we'd all bid together.
Understood, got it.
All in favor? Accept a grant. Whereas Toccoho Union Free School District has been informed of a grant from the PTA Grants Committee to be made to the district, and whereas the district would like to accept such grant, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the grant from the PTA Grants Committee for the Life Skills Field Trip to the Hudson River Museum in the amount of $350. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Scott, any comment on this? I'd like to thank the PTA, obviously, for this grant. Appreciate it. All in favor? Another grant. Whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has been informed of a grant from the PTA Grants Committee to be made to the district, and whereas the district would like to accept such a grant, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a grant from the PTA Grants Committee for the CT Science Center traveling programs in the amount of $1,356. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura. Once again, thank you to the PTA for this grant. Appreciate it. All in favor? And we got another one. Whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has been informed of a grant from the PTA Grants Committee to be made to the district, and whereas the district would like to accept such grant, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a grant from the PTA Grants Committee for the Cottle Theater Club in the amount of $1,000. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura. Once again, thank you to the PTA. All in favor? Should have waited to the end. I did it all once. Accept a donation. Whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has been offered a donation from the Toccoho Schools Athletic Booster Club for the purchase of an indoor sports cage to benefit, to benefit Toccoho Athletics Department. And whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a donation from the Toccoho Schools Athletic Booster Club in the amount of $5,545 for an indoor sports cage. The funds will increase the revenue budget code A2705, gifts and donations by $5,545, and the appropriate budget code A2855.201-02-0125, baseball equipment by $5,545. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, thank you very much to the Athletic Booster Club. They're a fairly new organization. They've made some donations, but this is definitely the largest one so far. Great donation, yeah.
And Jacob mentioned that.
Yeah. And actually, it's not, you know, from my wife who's involved in this, I know that it's not actually just a batting cage. It's being called a batting cage, but it actually has multiple uses. Golf, lacrosse, so it's got, yeah, it's got a lot of uses for the entire athletics program. Yeah.
That's, it's pretty amazing that, I think I had a meeting with them, like, two years ago, right?
Yeah, it was last year, yeah.
I mean, and it rains three days a week now, so it's great for the kids to get inside and not lose practice.
Yes, absolutely. I don't think we voted. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, accept the donation. Whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has offered a donation from the Seminera family for the purchase of championship rings for the state championship cheerleading team. And whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from the Seminera family in the amount of $2,859 for the championship rings. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Cynthia, thank you very much to the Seminera family. This is very nice. So this is rings to commemorate the cheers, state championship, right? Yeah, very nice of the Seminera family. Thank you very much. All in favor? Okay. Approve a property tax report card. Resolved that the Board of Education at Toccoho Union Free School District approve the property tax report card for the 2024-2025 school year, and authorize the business manager to submit, submit it to the State Education Department. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? Okay, and last item. Resolved that the Board of Education approves a budget amendment related to the commercial property insurance claim fund, funds received for steam or water damages to the newly renovated middle school, high school cafeteria. The amendment is to increase the revenue budget code A2680, insurance recoveries by $77,316.52, and to increase the appropriate budget code A1621.434, maintenance emergency repairs by $77,316.52. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any comment on this, Faith, or you already kind of addressed it, but, yeah?
So, this is our insurance consortium, our insurance reimbursement for steam damage in the newly renovated middle school, high school cafeteria. We had to make some repairs to the wall, build an enclosure. A lot of wall damage and water damage was repaired to the tune of $77,000. So, they covered it.
That's great.
And we're hoping that the bond work next summer will address it permanently.
Good, very good. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, we do have personal recommendations. We do that as in a group. So resolved that the Board of Education approves personal recommendations A through H, as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Cynthia, any discussion on these? All in favor? All right, that is it. That brings us to our second recognition of the audience for any item at all. Oh, do you want to, okay, just, first, you want to just answer Allison's question?
Yeah, so I have an answer to your question. Okay. We had 12 girls graduate in last year's class. We dropped to JV for one year to build back up. They are 3-0. That's great. We'll be back to varsity for next year. The stipend has been budgeted for that one. The boys' stipend is the one that needs adjustment for varsity team for next year. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Collins, Laura.
You appeared. So, yeah, did you want to speak? If you please keep it to three minutes. One thing I'm going to be a little better at than I have been in the past is, we're not going to go back and forth. You can ask a question if you like, but we're not going to answer it when we're at the podium. That's not because of you, obviously. That's just something we've gotten sloppy about, because a three-minute warning, or the three-minute limit, I should say, gets skewed when we start getting into a back-and-forth dialogue. So, three minutes. If you have any questions, you can pose them, but we're not going to answer them while you're up there.
Why do I always feel like you bring that up as soon as I get up to the mic?
No, I, did I bring it up? Last time I let you go, though, I didn't stop you at all last time.
Okay. I don't have much to say, except that I wasn't even going to speak tonight, but when I saw the presentation, I thought about something, and I thought, maybe you would benefit from the perspective of a parent who's been battling the district for nine years to get her son appropriate accommodations and special ed services. So, you know, Student A in your presentation is a third grader who is being flagged for not being able to decode. And I see a student who was failed in kindergarten first and second grade. That's what I see. I don't see a student who is being helped in third grade, because by now, that student's drowning. And so what I hope that you take from this is that it's been my experience that the teachers in the classroom at Cottle are not equipped to figure out what kids are special ed kids and what kids are not. And it's also been my experience that when you tell them that your son is a special ed kid, they say, no, no. You know, I've had, I had a lot of that in my history at Toccoho, and it didn't serve my son well. And I ended up pulling him out of the district. And now he's back, and hopefully, things are going to be different with a fresh group of people who are really, I think, trying harder to try to put their finger on the pulse of getting these kids help. But just from my perspective, I see Student A as being failed for three years. So, he didn't just develop, Student A doesn't just develop special education needs and a learning disability. You don't develop a learning disability unless you have a head injury, you don't develop a learning disability. You go into school with a learning disability, and it's up to the teacher to say, hey, why can't that child recall sight words? Why can't that child retain CVC words? Why can't they do, why can't they remember the vowel sounds? So, my history in the school is that the teachers in the classroom are not equipped to recognize children who need special services. That's my history. And on another note, I do have a question, so you can answer it, or you don't have to. The question is about IEPs. I believe that you said there was one IEP in the building. Is that correct?
The question that was asked was, do students who have IEPs, do they receive building-level services?
Okay. So 10 to 20% of all students nationwide are special ed kids who need IEPs. So if we don't have 60 kids in Cottle with 600 students that have IEPs, we're not paying attention.
That's.
Yeah.
No.
What, he was, just to make a response.
Did you want to respond to that, Ms. Rash? Go ahead.
Because I think you're not understanding what Mr. Rash, what Mr. Rash says, I don't kind of want that out.
Yeah.
That's not what he was saying. So I just do want that clarification.
So, to clarify, as far as I know, there is one student that has an IEP that also receives building-level services through the tiers. And that one student who has that IEP is receiving, I believe it's Tier 3 mathematics, in addition to the IEP classification that occurred this year.
So just to let you know, the classification rate in Tocco, I think, is 16%. So I didn't want you to think there was one kid.
It's 20%.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, okay. Okay, so that's just the clarification.
Sounds like, yeah, it's 16%. Yep. Dr. Sweeney? I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for, open mic for comments? Nope? Okay. I don't know, I'm tired. I'm losing all my faculties here. All right, we're good. Open mic night, yeah. We should start that. We should start that. All right, motion to adjourn. Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for, to our presenters. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.